I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, welcome everyone. Up first, we have minutes of the previous meeting, October 18th, 2021, all entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion approved, spent seconded, are there any corrections? Anyone wish to stop for the minutes? Hearing and seeing now, with all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. We are on to outside the rail. Judging by the number of people here, I would say outside. So just state your name and address if you would, please.
Hi, my name's Greg Cox, farmer from West Rutland, Vermont, and big advocate of Rutland. And so tonight I'm here for health reason. I grow clean food and I like to drink clean water. And I don't dispute that fluoride has been a boon in preventing tooth decay. And we've been doing it for quite some time. But if anybody has kept up with it, topical application is the best. And it is available, my kids get it in West Rutland schools, topical, you can get it in any toothpaste. When they started water fluoridation, they didn't have those options and they weren't widespread.
Can you put your shot mic on? I have a problem hearing.
It's not a mic for the room.
Yeah, it's, yeah. So, you know, now they have some research coming out that is rather disconcerting. They do know that fluoride passes the placenta. There is some research that shows that it does during fetal development affect negatively affect IQ. You're seeing, I'm standing here as an older gentleman who has some renal problems, kidney problems. I found out I was only born with one, so I have to take really good care of it. And fluoride in water can affect renal function. And so with, in, who drinks a lot of water? Young athletes. There is no way of regulating the dosing. It, it does help with tooth decay, but by putting it in the water, it has other issues, other offsetting issues, so it's risk assessment. And I really think that since fluoride is virtually free and available everywhere and better topically than ingesting it in our water, we should, as, as citizens and you guys as representatives, really take a hard look at this issue and the new, the new research that's coming out. It's a little disconcerting for me as a, as a new grandparent also. I have a five month old and she's very, my daughter is very interested in reading all of these things. And, and she's concerned about fluoride. I personally, when I go to restaurants in Rutland, I do not drink the water because I have to watch out for my own personal health. So thank you very much and I appreciate everything you guys do.
Thank you, Greg. Real quick, just to understand, there may be more people here to speak on this issue. That is on the agenda and I do intend to move it up, so it'll be the first thing following Brennan Duffy's piece. So if you're here to speak to the fluoride issue one way or another, you just hold until a few moments later in the agenda. Thank you. Are there other members of the public who wish to address the board on matters not on the agenda? Chief Lovin.
Just stopped by to tell you an example of what kind of a community Rutland is. Over the last six nights, we've had three major fires, each of them stressing the department. But the first one was at 10 Baxter Street. Then we had a house fire at 18 Dana. And then this morning at 113 Park Avenue. Just wanted to let you know the type of community we have. Not only did your firefighters come in from home, we outside Rutland town, West Rutland and Clarendon Fire Department come in to help us on mutual aid. Very important, we had the city police department there. Want to especially thank the patrol officers who protected us, who watched our back, who pulled lines, who changed air bottles. A big community again. The investigators from the police department, the state police, did an incredible job for you, the taxpayers. The dispatchers, the people that are always forgotten, these dispatchers are great. The police department should be very proud. They anticipate what we need long before we ask for it. Department of Public Works, they came in, barricaded it, secured the scene for us. They made sure the water and the sewer mains were open so that we could get the water to put out the fires. Green Mountain Power, they were able to cut the power within minutes of our request in Baxter Street. It was critical because electricity was a big issue. Regional ambulance for taking care of the injured and also standing by to protect us. Had folks like the Granger Street Market who sent bottles of water, cases of water to us just because they realized, you know, we might be thirsty. All the neighbors, especially in the Dana Avenue area, that filled our trucks full of water and food, along with the local chapter, the Red Cross, something you don't normally think of, but they came to our aid, came to the aid of the victims of these fires. Also special shout out to Mike Brookman and to Mark Sadekowsky for the many acts that they do to help us. They make these buildings safe in the city. They work in very dangerous conditions. They threw ladders for us, they changed bottles, you name it, they were doing it for us just to help us. I want to thank them. And lastly, between the mayor and members of the Board of Aldermen checking in on us, we really appreciate it. We know you have your back, our backs, but we just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Hillary Gillan.
I would like to make a comment on the Baxter Street fire. Since I live right next there, when I look at the window when you were first getting near the flames, there were about 40 feet over those buildings. The wind was blowing, the sparks were going over my house, and I was amazed, within 20 minutes, you had that thing under control. Very good. Thank you very much. You saved that anyway.
Thank you. All right, we're still under outside the rail. Are there any other members of the community here to address the board on matters on the agenda? All right, then we'll move on to communications from the mayor.
Okay, well, thank you very much. And that is the kind of community that we have here. And I thank you for reminding everyone of that and everybody at home. And thank you for all you do, Billy. I appreciate it. So, good evening, everyone. Tonight, on your agenda, you will see that I am presenting to you the fiscal '23 Rutland City Municipal Budget Proposal. And we sent that to you digitally this afternoon and you have hard copies for you tonight. I want to take a minute to publicly thank Judy Fraser, my administrative assistant, for all the work that she's done, city treasurer Mary Markowski for all of her help in developing the numbers and helping me out upstairs, and also my department heads for all their hard work and assistance putting this budget together. So, a few highlights that I will mention tonight for especially the folks at home. There will be an article in tomorrow's Rutland Herald regarding the proposal and, and some of the significant pieces about it. I continue to acknowledge the taxpayers' limited ability to absorb significant increases that are not affordable while providing the resources to continue to move the city forward. This budget proposes a new position in the Building and Zoning Department, which we just heard about. This code enforcement position will address the overstressed backlog of work, but will more importantly, proactively work to improve our housing stock here in the city and enforce the building codes in a forward-looking manner. And we've already gotten a good jump on that and that help is needed. And I think we all have talked about that in previous budget sessions. This budget also proposes to add an assistant city attorney to address a universally acknowledged overburdened city attorney's office, which of course is a key position which affects all operations here in city government. Over at the PD, we are currently, as most of you know, carrying many vacancies. The current number is 13 sworn officers, they're down. This budget funds six of those vacancies, but reduces funding for seven positions and adds one civilian sworn position. The outlook for filling these positions unfortunately are dim in the short term. However, if by some chance we find a way to fill those positions during the time that this budget is in effect, which will be for the next, between July 1 of '22 and June 30 of '23, we will, and I have promised this, by the way, to fund them and fill them. We fully fund the pension line, which last year, you will remember, we took a $300,000 reduction. I fully fund that in this, in this budget proposal. Hard costs continue to increase, such as health insurance and fuel costs. This budget also provides a COLA for non-union folks at 1.5%. So with all those upward pressures, overall, the budget is up, I believe modestly, at 2.78%. Again acknowledging the taxpayers' plight and trying to remain affordable for all of us here in the city. So I do look forward to our, our budget meetings, which I'm hoping will be scheduled in the next few weeks and we can get to work. And that's really all I have for you tonight.
You're welcome. Any questions for the mayor? All right, very good, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, this brings us to additions and additions to the agenda. Treasurer Markowski informed me that the review of financial policies is not ready for tonight, so we'll scratch that from the agenda. And given the large audience here, we'll move up both Jack and Eric to follow Treasurer Markowski. I think Brennan and Treasurer Markowski will be relatively quick. Attorney Boomer.
Unfortunately, I have one request for an addition of an executive session regarding negotiation of a contract.
I'll entertain a motion to add to the agenda. Our motion has been seconded to add and hopefully you will be delighted on the agenda. With all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. All right, so this brings us to Brennan Duffy, RRA. Buy app request, this is page one of your packet.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having me. So in the memo that I sent out last week in the board packet, wanted to make folks aware that we have another buy app request. This time it is from Marble Valley Catering. We actually have the two applicants here, which is Nate Wright and Lisa Fenimore, to answer any questions if we have any. But the RRA board reviewed this at our last meeting and found that they met the eligibility requirements for the buy app program. They are requesting a $5,000 grant through the program and also a referral to Heritage Family Credit Union to have an initial discussion about the revolving loan fund that was set up for a potential collateralized loan through Heritage. So they are looking at actually purchasing the Killington Abdelian Market at 22 Killington Avenue. They currently run a catering business out of their home in Proctor and are looking to expand that operation in the new, the new site and grow that business. So there's a significant amount of capital investment going into that, as well as a plan for some new jobs to be created here as they get, get things going at that new site. The recommendation from the RRA board would be for the approval of a $5,000 buy app grant with the actual check to be just delivered to them upon the closing of the real estate and the business transaction, because that has not yet occurred, and also to make a referral to Heritage Family Credit Union so that they can begin discussions about a larger collateralized loan. So that is the recommendation.
Holden Clifford.
Move to spend the rules.
Second.
Motion to spend the rules, spent seconded. With all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Holden Clifford.
And I would move for the approval of the $5,000 buy app grant with the check to be distributed following a successful closing of the property business and to approve a referral to the Heritage Family Credit Union for the collateralized loan in accordance with the program's policy.
Second.
We have a motion, spent seconded. Any questions, discussion, debate? You guys are here, would you like to speak to any of this?
Thank you.
Good luck.
All right, hearing no discussion and debate, we have a motion, spent seconded. With all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Brennan.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Next, Treasurer Markowski, treasurer's report for September 30th, 2021, addition of an email.
Thank you, hello, everyone. This report that I brought is the September 30 financials, and we generally will refer those to committee, the quarter end reports. I will say that we have the auditors coming in not, actually a week from today, so I've been pretty busy just preparing everything for those, for, for that. But I did want to highlight a couple of things when you're looking at September reports. I did notice that the unassigned fund balance is better than we had projected when we set the tax rate. You'll see in the reports that I sent you, it looks really good, but then I saw, I've been like, what did I do wrong? And I did do an entry wrong, so it's at about 2.3 million right now, so slightly higher, but I always like to see that, hoping that next year when we do that tax rate, we'll have a little bit more to give back. So, did want to point that out. I put some summary details in there for you outlining capital funds and special revenue funds. One fund that we had been talking about in ARPA was the record preservation, which has about 188,000, we were guessing about 100, so we were off on that as well, so. But we have some considerable funds in capital for water and sewer and in the general funds, to point that out. And just quickly looking at revenue and expenses, I would note that most departments are within that 25% target. Recreation a little bit over, but revenues are tracking over as well, so. So I see those things, I don't know if anybody has any specific questions on financials, but we could refer it if you want to.
I'll move to refer the quarter and financials to the finance committee.
Second.
Right, we have a motion to refer, spent seconded. Any questions or comments about that referral? Hearing and seeing now, with all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, this now takes us to Jack Crowther, requesting the Board of Aldermen review fluoridation of the city water supply, pages two and three of your packet.
I would just as soon let the people from outside, who plan to speak from outside the rail, speak and then they can go home. And I have a little bit more to say, but I think they will probably cover a lot of what I have to say, so that may shorten my part of it.
Holden Clifford.
So I just have a question real quick, and maybe the mayor can answer this for us. I'm looking at the budget and I want to be, I want to make sure that the fluoridation, I think it goes every other year. And do you know if it's in this year's budget, or is that a better question for Jim?
Well, there's no change in policy, but this is, so whenever it's supposed to be in there, it's in there. So I don't know if it's in that or not, I'd have to ask you.
Okay, so.
I think it is every other year, but.
No, that's fine, and I, that's why I was asking, just so that I know whether it's in there for this year's, for this budget that we're talking about right now, so if any, if anybody knows, I mean, you know.
The city water being.
Yeah, it's fluoride, it's fluoride, it's the budget.
I think it's budgeted every two years, though, so is the money actually in this budget, was it in last year's? Okay. So that's, that's the only thing that I want to, want to ask. Thanks.
All right, all right, so there are probably a number of people here who wish to speak on this issue. I saw your hand first. I just asked, try to keep it right around two minutes, I understand there's probably a lot of people who want to offer a lot of comments.
Thank you, I'll try even less, although it's hard for me. Chris Soliski, 17, East Center Street, city resident, taxpayer, former Board of Aldermen, former police commissioner, and volunteer for a lot of boards and, and groups around the city. I'm just here to support the group that will stand up tonight. I forgot the process of fluoridation, if it's simply the commissioner who decides or a team of the commissioner and the mayor, but if that's the case, I ask that you send it to committee. I ask that you have a full, fair, objective discussion. It's an important issue for many of us. And my own position is I simply don't wish that the government put chemicals in my drinking water. It comes down to that. I'm very much pro-vaccine, but I'm more pro-individual responsibility and decision-making. I think people will make the right choice. It is a chemical. Other people will speak to the science and the statistics, which I do not have personally. My own science is simply, please take the chemicals out of the water, make it clean, especially with that sand filtration system and the clean water coming down off the mountain. We have incredible water and there, unlike the COVID-19 vaccinations, there are numerous opportunities for people to get that fluoride elsewhere. So thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, I saw another, yes, just give us your name and address, please.
My name is Ada Pizzetti, I live at 3 Durham Drive, Rutland, Vermont. So I have quick notes here. I would just like the board to know that as a resident, if you would please reconsider fluoridation of our water supply. More and more evidence is showing that adding fluoride is detrimental in many ways, all of which have been proven to be true. My main concern is that I, that I think medicating an entire community by adding it to the water supply is taking away a basic right to pure water. I, I have been buying water for years because I feel so strongly that fluoride is a medication. And I believe that there are other ways to ensure healthy teeth, especially for children, without fluoridating an entire community's water. I too feel I do not want that in my water. I think that other ways of giving fluoride is possible, for instance, giving out fluoride toothpaste to the children in school, or topically, as Greg announced, it happens in West Rutland. So thank you very much for considering that.
Thank you. Other members?
Raised in Rutland and then made the journey to Pittsburgh for a number of years, am now back as a proud, happy Rutland resident. I'm a strong supporter of fluoride. I make sure my toothpaste has fluoride. I made sure of that growing up. However, my middle son, when he was 17, was diagnosed with Crohn's disease. Given, it was a severe case, he was given a 10-year life expectancy. He now, by the way, is 48 and has three kids. But they put him under treatments. And at the time, I was living in Pittsburgh and we were looking at fluoridating the water in the town of Pittsburgh. His doctor contacted me and said, if your town does that, do not let him drink the water. He also knew, his doctor, that my parents lived in Rutland and my son visited him, my parents, quite often. He said, do not let him drink the fluoridated water. They went backtracking because he, in the school, they were doing the swish and spit where they brush the fluoride on and then the kids are supposed to spit it out. We had had to stop him from that because when he do it, if he swallowed any of it, he'd immediately start vomiting. The doctor, his doctor told us that fluoride is a contraindication with Crohn's disease. My middle grandson now, his son, is in Colorado, or in North Carolina. He has Crohn's disease, he was just diagnosed. His doctor a year ago told my son, do not let him drink the water outside, the town they're in doesn't have fluoridated, but said, do not let him drink the water because it's contraindicated with Crohn's disease. Although I think fluoride is a terrific thing and certainly helpful in preventing decay, preventing dental problems. We need to think of some of our people that have conditions that it's contraindicated. When my son and my grandson come up to the house, I can no longer pour them a glass of water. I have to go and buy bottled water for them to drink. So I guess I'm asking that you look at the science and rethink this whole idea. Thank you.
Other members from outside the rail who wish to speak to this issue?
Do I have to speak in the microphone? Or can I start speaking? I'm Bob Amalai from 129 Bellevue. I used to work for CBPS, I'm retired. I'm just in support of any action that would end fluoridation in Rutland for all the reasons that were given here, and that's my statement.
Kathleen Krawitzki, Roberts Avenue, Rutland. You all know that I've been on this for a long time as far as trying to get it out of our water. What I'm telling you now is it would be a huge economic development project for the city. That, that would go worldwide, that Rutland City made the decision to use clean water on our farmers' resources. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lois Steinberg, Ash Street, Rutland. Born and raised here, been gone 40 years, just returned. Had a reverse osmosis system in my home in California for many years, even though I lived in a mountainous region that had no fluoridation and, and good, healthy water. And I'm about to put a reverse osmosis system into my house now to take the fluoride out of the water. Not happy, I've been drinking it for a year. Agree with all that's been said by others that spoke before me, the main point I wanted to make, as someone who also has some health issues, one of the things that I found that I'm allergic to is sodium laural sulfate, which is in everything. It's actually in toothpaste, it's in soaps, it makes things froth, and people feel that when soaps and toothpaste froth, that somehow that makes them cleaner. And when you need to eliminate SLS from your system, you actually get fluoride taken away from you also, because it's just very hard to find a toothpaste that's both SLS-free that has fluoride in it. And the toothpaste thing is important and great, but it's actually really easy to just buy fluoride gels and rub them on your teeth. And I think truly that good oral hygiene for children comes from learning how to floss and brush really, and not even, is fluoride that important compared to good hygiene? So I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members?
Nick Santoro, Maple Street. Before fluoride was dolled up by the medical and the public relations industry, people in the fertilizer industry and the aluminum industry suffered severe health repercussions from fluoride. Any of you who are particularly interested, for the sake of your children and grandchildren, I would suggest you go Google old videos about health effects of workers in those two industries. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members?
I'm Ryan Yoder from Danby, Vermont. I came up here, my parents live on Killington Avenue, and a lot of my customers at the farmer's market live here in Rutland. And I've been concerned about fluoridation for a while. There's quite ample evidence that it's a neurotoxin, that it can exacerbate osteoporosis in elderly people. And the main problem with the, whether it's effective for dental purposes or not, the problem with putting it into a water supply is that it's medicating an entire population without their consent, and that is unethical and shouldn't be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Others who wish to speak to this?
Hello, I'm Teresa Haywood. I live here in Rutland. And I work as a nurse practitioner, and so I'm, you know, pretty used to looking up recommendations and seeing what the current guidelines are. And the other night, I took the time to look at the Cochrane reviews, which is kind of the gold standard of synthesizing all data and looking at the recommendation to, you know, alter treatment or call for more studying. And these are the three takeaways. As of 2015, they said there is insufficient evidence demonstrating effectiveness of fluoride in water at preventing cavities. And so that's the whole point. There's insufficient evidence. There's no demonstration of increased cavities after they discontinue it. So there have been a few cases where cities stopped the fluoridating the water system and no increase in cavities occurred. In fact, they actually found that there was a decrease. It seems, you know, kind of a trend. So sometimes the decrease in cavities we see is just sort of, there's a lot of other factors, you know, maybe public outreach, better access to dental care. Sorry, I don't know why I'm kind of shaky voice. Last thing. There is, what they did come away with, they said there is significant association between dental aesthetic concerns and fluoride level, and that's something called fluorodosis, and that's white streaking. So that's the one thing they said that they could, there is sufficient evidence of. And they said, "There are some speculation, or there is some speculation about harms of ingested fluoride, and more research is needed to assess adverse effects associated with fluoridated water." So, you know, more is needed to investigate whether it's harmful, and they have not found any evidence that it prevented cavities. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Anna Tadio. My current address is 25 Ingram Avenue, Rutland, Vermont, and I'm born and raised in Rutland. And I wasn't necessarily going to speak because everybody has had such valuable points, but I wanted to offer one further point, and that is, I spent four years in Portland, Oregon, as a student, and Portland, Oregon has successfully removed fluoride from their water. And they have a very healthy population of 600,000 people who drink that water. And not only does the water taste better, but the people are still healthy and there hasn't been an increase in cavities in this particular population of people. So I strongly encourage the committee to consider Portland, Oregon as a successful case study of removing fluoride from the water. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Others who wish to speak to this? Jack, did you have something that you wanted to speak to?
If everyone else is done, I'll go.
Yeah.
Let's move on, Jack. So the request is that the board take a fresh look at, take this off, that the board take a fresh look at fluoridation, particularly in light of recent research on the neurotoxicity of fluoride. And my letter to, my letter to Henry included a fact sheet on that research. And Teresa mentioned the Cochrane review of 2015. Well, a number of these studies on that fact sheet have taken place since 2015, particularly 2017, I think, 19, 20. These are studies that focus on the possible harm to the developing brain. And that is clearly a concern to any community. The research points to two points of vulnerability. Pregnant women drinking fluoridated water are exposed to a higher level of fluoride. That can show up in lower IQ later in life. The other point of vulnerability is children who are being bottle-fed as infants in communities where the water is fluoridated. So if you're using fluoridated water to mix up your formula, that child, in comparison to its body weight, is getting a heavy dose of fluoride. And those two situations are connected with statistically significant rates of lower IQ. So here in Rutland, and I'm not pointing a finger at local officials, but here in Rutland, there is no effort to warn parents or pregnant women that this is a risk that could be reduced by purchasing spring water. I'm more inclined to point the finger at the state health department, which is consistently saying that it's safe and effective, and the whole public health system, I think, takes its cues from not just the state health department, but the federal department, CDC, which has, you know, promoted fluoridation for 70 years now. And the American Dental Association, which followed, stepped right behind the public health service back in 1950, without doing its own due diligence, they have been behind this for 70 years. So, you know, that neurotoxicity is the main talking point of those of us who are opposed to fluoridation. But it is by no means, and you can understand why we would focus on that, but it's by no means the only danger of fluoride. Significant science points to risks to, as someone mentioned, the kidney function, thyroid function is another area where studies have pointed to problems. Someone mentioned dental fluorosis, and I suspect that a lot of you have seen instances of it. This is a poster I had printed showing different degrees of dental fluorosis, which is a spotting and staining of the teeth. And at the very mild level, it's not all that noticeable, but as it becomes more severe, it can become disfiguring. The level of dental fluorosis, according to national statistics, is 40% or more, and it's been growing over the years. This is government data that's supporting it. The question arises, if fluoride is interrupting the formation of tooth enamel, what is it doing to other tissues of the body? And in many cases, the research is ongoing and the red flags are out there. It's not always definitive, but, you know, if a word to the wise is sufficient, then we should be playing better safe than sorry. So, let's see. Aside from the health issues, and I think Chris mentioned this, is the ethical question. And for many people, this is the main issue, is medicating an entire population without informed consent. So probably two main sides of, two main parts of this argument against fluoridation. I've made this kind of presentation before, but we have a new board of aldermen, so I wanted to take this time to come back again and suggest taking a new look at it. One request that I would make is that if you agree to take this fresh look, that there be some means for getting remote testimony. I'm active in a group called the Fluoride Action Network, which is a national and international group devoted to this cause. And I have contacts who would be willing to weigh in with scientific expertise in the area of toxicology and dentistry and medicine and so on. So I would hope that, you know, in your inquiry, should you undertake it, you would make provision for, you know, outside testimony of that type. And if any of you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to try and answer them.
Up first, I had a question.
I have a question, Jack.
You're going to have Alderman Talbot?
Yeah. So everybody who spoke made compelling points. I'm open to examining this further, and I'd make a motion to refer to Public Works.
Second.
Motion. It's my second to refer to Public Works. Alderman, have you had your hand up? Would you want to speak to this before we vote on the referral?
I just had a question for Jack.
Oh, sure. Yeah, go ahead.
So, if I may, Jack, this new information you have, has the Department of Health seen it, or have you got any feedback on the new information that you have?
The state health department, no. The information is out there in the scientific literature, and the anti-fluoride movement is putting a lot of eggs in the basket of a federal lawsuit, which has been going on since 2016 and is in federal court in San Francisco. The trial has been held. There have been multiple delays, as the judge seems to be waiting on a few more pieces of evidence. We feel that we have proved our case with the testimony of some top-flight scientists who have done work for the US government. And were it to go our way, I think that would almost, or potentially could, could end fluoridation. But, you know, it's, we petitioned the Environmental Protection Agency to ban this chemical. They denied the petition. We took it to court. We had the trial. We think we proved our case, but it's pending. So in terms of your question about the bureaucracy knowing about this evidence, it's well on the record, and they've had plenty of time to absorb it and think about it, but so far, no change in federal policy on, you know, fluoridation is still safe and effective.
If I may follow up. So I have no problem, as chairman, putting this to committee to take another look. Just so everyone knows, there was a vote on this, it passed like two to one, to fluoridate the water, fluoridation the water years ago.
Three to two, yeah.
Three to two, I'm sorry. And then it is ultimately by charter, the Public Works Commissioner's, under his purview, as you know that, too. So I guess, that being said, I'm not sure, and I'll probably have to get with the city attorney, whether, if it does go to committee, you know, that we discuss it and we decide that something is going to be reversed or anything, or if that's the way it should be, then I'd need to find out for sure if we can in fact do that, or it has to go to a public vote again. So like I said, I would welcome the subject into Public Works Committee to have a meeting. Just not sure because we've got budget time right now when it's going to happen.
Yeah.
But I'll work with you.
Yeah, okay, great.
So, if I may, to that point, if it is going to Public Works, that we also hear both sides of the story. As we know, excuse me, through the years that Jack has come, we have a set of dentists that come, we have the health department that comes, so they should be noticed as well. And I think if the city attorney can just revisit the power that the board has, even if it defunds a line item, what power truly the board has to remove the, I don't know what parts per billion is in the water, but for the fluoride. So I think if we're going to discuss it, then we have to discuss it all.
We have a motion, it's been seconded, to refer this item to Public Works Committee. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So Alderman Clifford will just reach out to you, likely following the conclusion of budgets.
Okay. We live right around the corner from each other.
And if people would like to depart, I know this may not be thrilling for you to stick around for the rest, but I'll give you a moment.
Can we leave, too? We can?
All right. This leads us to Eric.
Forgot Eric's here.
You know, usually my line of work, you don't want the audience walking out before you start talking. But here we are. Well, good evening. I know Henry provided you all with an outline of what it is that we previously have mostly all walked through the space and learned about what it is that we're doing over at 30 Center Street. And when I was thinking about coming here and talking tonight, I was thinking about my own experiences with the theater and what it's been like as somebody that attended the theater in high school when it was just reopening, and now as its executive director. And I think back to Brian Columore's booming voice on those radio ads early on, and they all ended with, "The magic is now." I don't know if you remember that, but it was like, that was Rutland's Got Milk campaign, right, was "The magic is now." In the project that we've walked you through, I think... And then in 2000, 99, 2000, when it was redone, a whole new group of individuals get to enjoy it. All of us in this room have all had experiences there. As we walked some of you through, some of you had experiences up in the penthouse that I know we're not going to bring up tonight, but the building has a storied history, and we, as the stewards of that future, take our responsibility very seriously. The project that we walked you through over at 30 Center Street is transformative. It is what our community needs. It is economic development at its very definition. What we're talking about is a project that, when completed, will increase the economic impact on our community by a half a million dollars a year. A half a million dollars. Finding a project with this sort of an impact within a 50-mile radius, I think, would be challenging, and we have it right here, one block over, at 30 Center Street. I keep saying that address, 30 Center Street, because I think it's important. We are the center of Center Street. When you think of that block and all the conversations that have had in these chambers about what it is to rebuild a downtown, we talk about Center Street, we picture Center Street. The Paramount Theater and the Richardson Building takes up a third of that block, and this project is about making that asset all that it can possibly be. So what we've asked for and what we presented in the materials that you received, I think, late last week, is we're looking for an investment from the city. And we use the word "investment" because that's what it is. This is an opportunity to make the absolute best use of an asset that is here for the community. The Paramount is a public trust. It is not owned by any one individual, it is owned by the community. And it's time that we continue that great tradition of moving that down the tracks and growing it to be all that it can be. As cliche as that is, that is what this project is about. It is about the future. It's about growing that annual attendance from 65,000 to 85,000. It's about letting our local nonprofits grow from generating $60,000 a year, that's $600,000 in the last decade, to earning $100,000 a year, because we're going to be developing a new fourth-floor venue that even more can make use of. It's about the future. So if Columore could have been here tonight, I would have had him get up on the microphone and scream, "The future is now," but he wasn't available. We're here to answer questions. Again, we're seeking that investment from the city in the Paramount, but ultimately, it's an investment in the city. We are the envy of so many other populations when you think about what our community of less than 20,000 people has available to it. Let's make that jewel shine even that much more. So having said all that, if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Alderman-Dunjust.
Awesome. Eric, guys, thank you again for coming. I appreciate the tour beforehand. There's a few things I want to say that Eric didn't say. I'm in support of this holistically, but, you know, if you think about what the Paramount means to our community beyond what Eric mentioned, right, it's a center, it is the center of Center Street, but it's also the center of almost everything that happens, right, whether it's the Family Feud, or the blood drives, or all these different things happen at Paramount. All these different things draw people to our area, right? And they create this community in and of itself. So Rutland is a city. Rutland is streets and roads and plumbing and the people that live here, but the Paramount actually generates this community and brings people in from the outside to see that community. So I think that's a huge value to what we have. I think it's one of our biggest assets. It ties into everything that we do, whether it's the Regional Marketing Initiative, whether it's the red carpet program, the concierge programs that we have. It is a draw. It is the draw. It is the center of our arts and culture for the area, and I absolutely support this proposal. I think it's fantastic, so thank you for coming.
Alderman-Davis.
So I'd like to echo what Alderman Dunjust said. I think we are all able to kind of take the tour and see the possibilities of what this can do to this community. Having a center where, a civic center where folks are going to locate, where you can draw people to this community, how will it affect our restaurants? How will it affect our, the downtown stores? The foot traffic, the draw, the farmer's market, whatever is happening down there? And then I think they are one of the biggest sources of rooms and meals that will benefit the city as an income, and we need the revenue. You know, we sit here, we talk about, how do we fund a pension? How do we fund these kind of things? And so I am in 100% support of this as well, and I appreciate that you have the vision to take this out and get it done.
So if I could, just real quickly, I wanted to publicly state that I'm also supportive of what these folks are bringing to the board tonight. I wanted to mention that I was not there in 1913 when the horses were. But I was there in 1964 when Walt Disney would bring R&amp;B to the Paramount Theater, and the place would be chock-full and with a lot of happy kids. And that's transformed into 35 or 40 years later, when I was up on that stage debating a mayoral candidate for, you know, being the next mayor of the city of Rowan. So it's gone, I've gone through a lot of transformations that all of us have. We all have a piece of that property down there. It is the centerpiece of what I believe is our growth for, in any vision that we have for downtown Rowan. So I'm in support of their ask, how we get there, and the devil's in the details, I've mentioned that to these folks. I think the Zomias Fund is the appropriate place for that initial request. The part about the rest of it, I floated the idea of ARPA funding, because there is a part, a piece in there that talks about nonprofits and the loss of revenue, and I think that that would be the appropriate place to take it. Certainly not in the city budget, but I don't think really, you know, in the end, I think that just the city standing up and making a statement and supporting this effort will help with the further fundraising that they've already, they've already accomplished some up to this point. They have their own cash in the project, and it will transform the city, and I'm in total support of it.
Alderman-Gillum.
Yes, thank you very much. I too am supporting this project, but as I told the gentleman last week when I sat down with them, they didn't have to prove anything to me because they've already proven it. When we did this the first time around, when I was on the board the first time around, we invested in the project. They have done everything they told us they were going to do, and then some. Well, it's time, it's come back around again. I think it's time for us to be involved and put some skin in the game and make sure this thing happens. So they already have a proven track record. I think they know what they're doing, and I think it's very important that they go the next step. Plus, the marketplace has changed very drastically in Rutland City on the hospitality side of things. So I think this is a very opportune time for them to bring this project forward.
Thank you, Alderman-Gillum.
I'll move, oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, one more. So I know that there's, at least the first portion is requested from the Zomias Fund. Can we get, I guess, an update on how much we have in that? I mean, what percentage of this are we looking to?
We had reviewed that at the last, I can't remember which meeting it was, but with all of the commitments and stuff, it was roughly 150,000 left uncommitted.
Uncommitted, so at this point, it would be releasing the remainder of the Zomias Fund, that we're talking about. Okay.
So I'll move to suspend the rule.
Yeah, sorry, one more comment there. So, you know, I'm definitely in support of any large-scale economic development project in the region that promises significant economic growth in our area. I do think that the numbers look promising on the surface. I'm interested to know if you've had a study, like a formal study, conducted to see the economic impact. I think that was one thing we talked about in the past. For me, I think it's important, you know, I think it's easy to get excited about something like this. I certainly get very excited, thinking about what this could do. I like to look at large investments from a quantitative eye and understand, you know, not just anecdotally what we think it can happen or what we want to happen, but what, you know, those whose expertise in this field, who look at large-scale projects all the time, can, you know, say to us after running the numbers. And so for me, I think that's something I'd want to see first, but I definitely wholeheartedly support the initiative, at least how it's initially presented.
Any pieces that you want to speak to?
Bert.
Alderman-Depoy.
So, Eric, Mark, Paul, when we talked a couple of months ago, or a month ago, whenever it was, I was downtown with you, you'd asked for possible ongoing, and that's the way I understood it from you, section in the budget, which would be, you know, a line item. Are you looking for something that's ongoing in perpetuity, or you're just looking for something over the next few years as listed here? So 150 out of Zomias?
All right. Now, my next question then is, are the numbers on this correct, the years? Because Budget 22, we're in right now. So are you asking for something out of contingency, out of the mayor's contingency, out of the current budget for Budget 22? Or are you actually looking for something in Budget 23, 24, and 25?
No budget.
It doesn't as much our budget need to be as the rest of the city. It may take more of our construction year.
Yeah.
So if we think about it, our budget.
Okay. So 300,000, 100,000 a year? Do we have anything that you're aware of in this budget year? So we're asking for $100,000 right now, and my question is, is where are we, where's that, where would that come from?
Not from the budget. Not from the budget.
Okay, well, where, 150,000? This is, we're talking the budget.
No.
Oh, you want, it doesn't say ARPA. No, that's what the mayor suggested.
Right, that's what, it's not, it's not the municipal budget.
All right, so the full 300,000 out of ARPA at this point, or where?
So as I said initially, and I'm glad to repeat it, is I'm not sure that I would go along exactly with the numbers. I did mention to these folks that I would not support a budget item on an ongoing basis or a one-time basis for what they were looking for. I thought there would be other avenues, and what I suggested, and what I continue to suggest, is I believe ARPA is exactly set up for this type of thing, and that's what I would support.
So the rest of the money, the proposal is the rest of the money out of Zomias? 150,000 is left in that, and then 300,000 ARPA?
If the board supports it at that level, I would support it, too, and that would be fine.
Okay, I'm clear. Thank you.
Alderman-Gillum, there a motion on the floor?
Yeah. I've been trying, but it isn't there yet. Well, I need to move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion to suspend the rules, it's been seconded. Would all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And I'll move for the approval of the $150,000 request from the Zomias Impact Fund.
Second.
We have a motion, it's been seconded, to approve the $150,000 contribution from the Wise Fund in discussion and debate on this question. Alderman-Rusa.
So, and then tomorrow, the check is written and handed over? Is that how it's going to go? There's no contingencies, no?
Zomias Fund. Right, that's the motion.
That'll end the Zomias account.
That's correct.
Yep.
Alderman-Franko.
Just to clarify, and maybe for the public, you know, to understand kind of what we are raising here, so the Zomias Fund is one of our few unrestricted funds that we have available. Can you remind us what, any other funds exist, if any, or is this the only unrestricted access we have?
Eric, any other unrestricted? I think this is essentially it, and this is the offset impact of the downtown that is historically caused by the mall.
Right. It was always intended to come to its natural death, so to speak.
Alderman-Rusa.
Yeah, I don't feel well, as everyone knows, I've been battling health issues, but I'm going back to the Community Development Committee Chairman, Arthur Crowley, and I think I was vice chair, and a lot of phone calls were made, because he and I were personal friends with Senator Stafford, Senator Jeffords. We got a lot of money for this organization, and a lot of it was done, and I never forget the night, one of the feasibility studies, two people from Boston came in and said, "Well, you buy the other building." And Mark goes, "Jesus, we just got one. We got to buy another building to do this." I mean, it was kind of funny, but we made it happen. And personally, I don't, I think the Paramount's a very important part of the downtown. I don't feel so warm and fuzzy about the way that people run it. I don't really have any love for these guys. I've never had a good relationship with them. I hope other people do. I hope that they realize that people like Art, myself, work very hard, and they don't even speak to you on the street. And, you know, as I said, it's another arrogant 501(c)(3) as far as I'm concerned, just looking to get a paycheck. That's my opinion, but it is, the Paramount Building is good for downtown. So I said my part, and I will vote for it because it's good for the community, but I'm still not warm and fuzzy about management.
Alderman-Franko.
My last piece, I'm just thinking about, you know, for our intention is to try and use ARPA funds, you know, those are not unrestricted. And so by using Zomias, we are taking up unrestricted funds and leaving restricted funds. And so I wonder if it makes more sense to try and approve 150,000 tonight for ARPA usage, and then look forward to another conversation about the remainder, if that's what we want to do. But to me, you know, we're trading unrestricted for restricted, and so I'm, I just don't know if the board has any thoughts on that.
I do. I just want to say, the Zomias was intended for the impact of downtown, and I can't think of another project right now that will significantly impact downtown and be true to the fund's intent.
I agree, but we also haven't had opportunity to seek more public input. I mean, well, we have, we haven't heard it, it's true. I'm not trying to hold this up.
No, 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 no.
I'm a huge supporter of this. I'm very excited. I'm trying to think logically about what we're doing with our funds, and that's the only question I have.
Alderman-Dunjust.
To Alderman-Franko's point, the nice thing about the Zomias Fund is that it's dedicated for downtown, for the impact from the mall, and we have that flexibility to use it in this particular case. The challenge with ARPA is, as much as the mayor recommends this, and we would all like to use it for that, we have to do the research, talk to the law firms, that's time-consuming, to make sure that we're spending this money appropriately. And I know that the Paramount getting these funds up front and quickly now would be good, and there's, you know, holding on to the purse strings, for the sake of holding on to the purse strings for future stuff, can be challenging at times. So for those three reasons, I do think that this is the right time to use these funds at this particular case, and then we can look at ARPA for the second half and see if that's a possibility.
Right, and I'm not trying to hold on to the purse strings for no reason.
No, no.
I think there's certainly, you know, projects that we could come up with. It's a lot of money to look at and say, I mean, I'm not trying to just hold this up for no reason. But if the board feels that, you know, with the Zomias Fund's intention, which I'm well aware of, that we want to go ahead and call that tonight, then I understand. I just wanted to raise that question for us.
I just want to add, I'm sorry, when I was rolling the numbers, we were at a meeting regarding a grant where we hadn't committed funds. So the 150 is what's committed. So if we make the decision now, we don't have anything for that grant that we may discuss in a half an hour, the Amtrak, remember, it's community economic development, right? So I just want to mention that. We have that discussion about that grant.
Right.
So the 150 would leave nothing for that.
Correct.
Okay. As long as everybody's aware.
Thank you.
Brian. Wearing the shoes.
Then when we get to a grant, we don't have a resource to match that grant.
Right, because the decision was not made to take it solely or at all from that fund. It was just a fund that was named.
Okay, I thought we had, contingency a little bit is a lie. Did we have that conversation?
Yeah, we had the conversation, we didn't formalize.
That's right, and I just want to, before we commit this, I want to make sure we don't talk about 15 minutes.
That's right.
It's gone.
That's fair.
So we have a motion, it's been seconded, to allocate the $150,000 from the Zomias Fund towards the Paramount Theater project. Would all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Alderman-Gillum.
I would like to take the remain-
Okay, I thought we had, is that not a little bit contingency, a little bit of Zomias? Did we have that conversation?
Yeah, we had the conversation, we didn't formalize.
That's right, and I just want to, before we commit this, I want to make sure we don't talk about 15 minutes.
That's right.
It's gone.
Right.
That's fair.
So we have a motion that's been seconded to allocate the 150,000 dollars from the Zomias Fund towards the Paramount Theater project. Would all those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries. Paul McGilley?
I would like to take the remainder, 300,000 dollars, and put it into Finance Committee to flush this thing out, and how we're going to do this.
Second.
We have a motion to refer the remaining 300,000 dollars to Finance and to discuss the way in which ARPA could potentially be used for this. Any discussion, any questions about the referral? Hearing and seeing none, would all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
So, that's me, Finance Committee. So currently, what we are doing, so it's similar to the process, we are working through requests. We met on the clerk's request, and we're going to discuss that this evening and going through. So I will schedule you, as Alderman Clifford said, we just got the budget, so we're working on those, but I will schedule you. So we can clearly have that discussion and move this along.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you very much, guys. All right, so we're actually back now to report the standing committees. Up first, we have Finance Committee, Alderman Davis, ARPA Funds, and City Clerk.
All right, thank you. The Finance Committee met on October 25th at 5:30. Members present were Alderman Talbot Garusa and myself as chair. Other present, other members present were Alderman DePoy, Clifford, I'm sorry, Paul, I felt, I spelt your name wrong, Savage, Franco Neary, and President Wickham. Also present was Mayor Laire, Treasurer Markowski, and City Clerk Eck. The clerk presented his quest for the ARPA funds dealing with the digitalization of the land records and technology upgrades to the automatic chambers. Discussion of land records was a quote from Cott System, and that was included in your packet, of 173,582 dollars and 50 cents. And then we also had one that was obtained later, Avenue Insight, and that amount is 232 dollars, 702.63. Or hire a temporary non-benefit employee to scan the records of a cost between 60 and 80,000. The committee and the clerk felt that this could be achieved in-house and save significant dollars. In-house would be a much longer process, but there appeared to be no time constraints that were outlined. The chamber was a, was a project with the clerk and Alderman Dungus. The project would allow upgrades in technologies for the chambers, allowing better public access to participate in meetings from other locations. Soundproofing was discussed, heat pump for cooling and heating, and the estimated cost of software licensing and soundproofing, et cetera, was 90 to 110,000 dollars. The first motion was to approve the ARPA funds for the digitalization of the land records, and I so move.
Second.
So, with that said, with that said, the next day, the clerk called me and had some questions about the timeframe, so I'm going to ask that the clerk speak to this in case there is any amendment requested to the motion.
Thank you, Alderman Davis. So, I was thinking, if I got the cart before the horse, it's, it's an extremely worthwhile project as far as that goes, but I'm an extremely anal person when it comes to things, and I might second guess myself, but I was really trying to figure out, how long would this take? You know, so I'm going to sit down with the books and scan it through and do all those kind of things. You know, we have a full-time person that does land records and stuff. We do about 18 books, 16 to 18 books a year. It's about 1,000 pages per book. I started doing the math, and I'm going, oh my God, this could be a five or six-year project, and I'm just not so sure this is going to work out. So at the end of the day, I had a discussion with Julie, who does the land record recording, and is extremely thorough at what she's been doing for the past five or six years, and she said, you know, Henry, if it's a light mail day today, let me just work uninstructed for a while. And we got two full hours of uninstructed time, no answering phones, no waiting on the counter. She went back, grabbed the book, came out and throw some numbers out, that won't mean much, but it was a better, a better alternative, a better outcome than I was expecting. She could do 45 instruments, or about 240 pages. So if you take a 900-page book, she was almost able to do a third of a book in three, two hours. So in a six-hour day, you're looking at a book, 300 books. What it boiled down to is, I'm pretty confident that this would turn into about an 18-month project, a little bit more than a year. And lo and behold, I'm not sure what, but the, the abstracting gods were out there, and a gentleman read the article in the paper that Gordon did a, a great job on and stuff, and came in, and this is his profession. And he brought in a cover letter and said, you know, I would love to work for you guys and see what we can do. But already, there has been a very, very worthwhile applicant that would come in, look at doing this, had some pretty good questions in regards to, hey, by the way, I wouldn't mind working on weekends, or after hours, or whatever. So, the good, the good and the good were, probably not going to take as long. I think there is the opportunity for pretty good financial savings doing it in-house on our own. And at this point in time, I have at least one applicant that has forwarded me a cover letter that would be very good at that, and we really haven't even looked at researching or advertising this, you know, this opportunity out there. So I think, you know, when it all boils down, that this is something that could come to fruition in short, shorter period of time, and for a pretty good cost savings. And I know the mayor has the opportunity to utilize the other, you know, other funds. There's a lot of ARPA opportunities out there and stuff, as I stated before, so. But I do, I feel pretty confident in, in regards to what I just presented to you folks, after at least getting some data, true data, that was out there, that Julie was able to do and stuff. And I think she was a little, you know, unsure of what it was going to be, but I think she was pleasantly surprised that, you know, she could work that quickly, you know, going through those books and stuff like that. Just, you know, putting a couple hours to it, it seemed like it worked out pretty well.
So, if I may, so you believe the 60 to 80,000 is an appropriate figure?
So when I did some of the math, I came down to it, I think 60 is potentially going to be on the lower side. I think that we could probably get it done, complete, for 80. As far as that goes, that would be kind of the number that I would kind of look for. I would love to be able to get it done for 60, if we can, but I'm being realistic. I'm thinking it'll be a little bit closer to the 80,000 than to the 60,000.
Does that, sorry, does that, 60 to 80 include the dedicated terminal for the user and the dedicated scanning equipment, that it won't be interrupted?
So I was thinking, based upon a conversation I had, and the dollar figure I was looking at for, you know, a person to do this kind of work, there's a dollar figure I had in my head. I think that it would leave enough, enough funds available for a dedicated computer, dedicated scanner. I'm thinking probably $5,000 for the hardware, Alderman Dungus, as far as that goes, and if that's the case, I think that we're, we're going to be within that ballpark, without question.
Then I, my motion will stand for the approval. I'll still leave the range of 60 to 80,000, because that was the motion coming out of committee.
Now, second. Any other discussion, any other questions? Alderman Garusa?
Just to be clear on the motion, this is to do in-house and not these contracts that were presented to us.
That's correct, to do in-house.
So I just want to be clear, it's not in there.
A temporary non-benefited employee.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because their last paragraph, and it was scary, and I would have voted against it, so I'm glad we're in-house. Thank you. Next up.
Any other questions, discussion, debate? Hearing and seeing none, we have a motion that has been seconded. Would all those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
And then, the motion also was to approve the use of the ARPA funds for the technology improvements to the automatic chambers.
Second.
Because we have two motions. And that, that dollar amount at the time was 90 to 110,000 dollars.
Was that for a referral?
We have, still have to do that, but we're going to approve the funds, and then we'll refer.
Thank you.
All right. Any discussion, questions, debate? Hearing and seeing none, we have a motion that has been seconded. Would all those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And then I move to refer to General Committee to write the RFP, and I so move.
Second.
Right, we have a motion to refer to General, and it has been seconded. Any questions, discussion on that referral? Hearing and seeing none, would all those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And if I may take a moment, Mr. Chairman, Alderman Neary was able to obtain a matrix from, I think, the town of Pittsburgh, maybe, it came, I think so, anyways. And it was very, very useful when you looked at it for the ARPA funds, you could, who was making the request, what the dollar amount for, whether or not it met the ARPA intention, you know, those type of things. And it allowed you to kind of run that list, run the dollars amount, and kind of know where you are. So, even though we have moved to approve these in goodwill, that's what we've done, but I think it'd be helpful if we developed that matrix, and then when we're all through with these requests, that we look at that matrix at the time, and then we can make any adjustments we feel are needed, necessary, whether, A, we don't have enough funds, or maybe another request that's come in and we want to shift things around. But it was extremely helpful. I'll see if I can get it to the clerk to kind of put it out to you, so you can take a look at it. And I spoke with the treasurer to see if we could develop one for our use. So if that works with the board, that's what the Finance Committee will do going forward. Okay.
Do you need a motion to keep?
No, 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 because we'll, we'll continue to run on with the requests that we have. And I, I just think we'll also be able to keep that matrix working at the same time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, up next, the General Committee, Alderman Garusa.
Yes, sir, Your Honor. The General Committee of the Board of Alderman met at 5:30 Tuesday, October 26th, in the downstairs conference room of City Hall. The agenda item was, quote, "review of the city-owned properties committee," end quote. A very well-attended meeting included members of the committee, myself, Alderman Garusa, Alderman DePoy, Alderman Clifford, Alderman Franco, as members of the committee. Also in attendance, Honorable Mayor of the City, Rutland Mayor Laire, Honorable President of the Board, Alderman Matthew Wickham, media past president of the Board, Alderman, Honorable Sharon Davis, as well as Planning and Zoning Administrator, and I don't know how to pronounce Andrew's last name.
Sternisty.
Sternisty, all right, I'll hopefully keep that. Along with other members of the Board, including Alderman Neary, Gillum, Honorable Rutland City Treasurer, Mary Markowski, Rutland Redevelopment Executive Director Brendan Duffy, City Resident John Ruggiero, Rutland Herald reporter Gordon Driscillow, and others that I probably failed to write down. Is anybody here I didn't, I didn't mention you, I'm sorry, Alderman, Honorable Alderman Talbot. And also via the telephone, with City Attorney Blumer and Alderman Michael Dungus, if I'm correct on that. Planning and zoning administrator, state again?
Actually, I think it's Sternisty.
Sternisty, Sternisty was called on by the Chair over his October 21, 2021 memorandum to the General Committee containing questions over the, quote, "buying property from the city of Rutland," end quote, documents and procedures, and had requested in his memo that the, quote, "staff envisions the General Committee will produce a written policy that can be made available to the public that better encapsulates the city-owned properties program, as well as provide the public an overview of how applicants and applications are selected. Producing a document that includes the evaluation criteria and policies will be imperative to ensure transparency and fairness in the process," end of the quote and request. After substantial amount of discussion, several in attendance, including Treasurer Markowski, had mentioned that the nine recently acquired properties of the city, they have been, there's been a substantial amount of interest in these nine properties by potential owners. Winter's coming, and the city would prefer to have transfer these properties out of its possession by winter, and return the properties to the city tax rolls as soon as possible. The committee felt any change or rewrite of the process at this time would be too lengthy and could delay the disposition of the properties. No formal motions were made. However, all in attendance verbally communicated to those in attendance that the current process is in place and is acceptable to begin and follow through in the sale of these city-owned properties at this time. Issue of staying committee will be looked at further upon request by the zoning administrator, Sternisty. Meeting adjourned at 6:58.
Thank you very much, Alderman Garusa.
Thank you.
Any questions, comments?
I just wanted to add that I thought that was probably one of the most productive meetings I've been to in a long time, as far as input from, you know, the, the people that were there and the, and the public. Very well done.
Thank you. If I could just address Alderman Clifford, I thought it was a heck of a learning experience.
Right.
The only thing I felt for him was, I think, coming into a new job. He maybe wants to change it to his liking, and we don't have that, that luxury, but maybe as we left it in committee over time, we could work more with him. But he's a great guy, and, and just, we just don't have the time on our side to, 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 to be able to accommodate that request. So, that's the only reason why. But, thank you. I thought it was a great meeting.
Yeah.
You guys helped out a lot.
Thank you. All right, up next, we have Community and Economic Development. Alderman Talbot, Mike Dungus.
I just have one, sorry, I just had one more comment on that, that meeting. I, I thought it was great. Andrew did a phenomenal job. You know, it's nice to see an employee come in and bring a lot of value to the table. The one thing, and the reason I think that this particular topic is so important for the city of Rutland right now, is there's a lot of perceived ambiguity in this process. And I think hearing from the people that spoke, there may not be actual ambiguity in some areas, there may, but I think a fair and honest process is what the city's aiming for. I think that's what we're going to end up with, and I, I really do appreciate you taking the time and putting that there. So, thank you. Thanks, sorry.
No problem. All right, hearing no other comments, we're on to Community and Economic Development. Alderman Talbot.
All right, the Community and Economic Development Committee met on October 27th, 2021. Members present included myself, Sharon Davis, and Mike Dungus. Others present, Dave Laire, Tom DePoy, Mary Markowski, Brennan Duffey, and Kathleen Krevetsky. Devin Neary attended in his capacity as a planner for the Rutland Regional Planning Commission and recused himself as an Alderman. The meeting was called to order at 5:30 PM. The purpose of the meeting was to learn more about the Vermont Transportation Alternatives Grant Application to Support Redevelopment of the Area Near the Amtrak Station. Brennan Duffy began the meeting by explaining that he, Devin Neary, and Andrew Sternisty have been working on a concept for redeveloping the plaza area near the Amtrak station to make it a more attractive and appealing environment, and improving pedestrian flow in the area. A VTAP grant is available from the state that would fund the bulk of a project on city-owned property adjacent to the station. The grant requires a $75,000 match from the city for a total project cost of $375,000. Mayor Laire emphasized that the Vermont Rail Action Network is very excited at the prospect of Rutland investing in the station, as there will be a significant increase in ridership on the Ethan Allen when the extension to Burlington is opened. Devin explained that following the recommendation in the Downtown Strategic Plan in 2020, the RVC began exploring what could be done to transform the area at a moderate cost with no permitting required, with support from Vermont Rail Systems, Amtrak, Vtrans, and the city. He presented a rendering that laid out the key elements of the project, gateway beautification, and pedestrian and traffic safety. The project will build off the new curbed sidewalk being installed by Walmart as part of their new lawn and garden center, and a new sidewalk will run from the station to Evelyn Street. The existing fence along the tracks will be replaced, and a green belt will be added to shield view of the parking lot, create shading, and a better sense of place. The existing parking area will be extended to add new spaces in an area that is currently gravel. Green spaces will be used strategically to create safer entrances and exits. Devin has met with the Amtrak steward and representatives from Vermont Rail System, representative from Amtrak, all of whom support the project. Vtrans has also expressed enthusiasm for the project, as it aligns with their larger project of redeveloping rail stations throughout Vermont, including upgrading bathrooms and seating, lighting, and cameras. The Rutland station will be included in that. Sharon Davis asked if any of the $75,000 match could be in kind, such as DPW services. Devin explained that there are significant restrictions on the match, but that it might be possible to use some of the paving bond to cover the 35,000 in paving costs in this project. Devin will get a definitive answer on whether or not that is possible. Devin shared the details of the $374,900 project budget, which includes mobilization costs, 10% contingency, 20% engineering, and 10% project management. The big-ticket items are the fencing at 33,000, new lighting at 25,000, curbing and sidewalks at 75,000, and paving at 35,000. Devin also shared an additional proposed plan to convert a separate parcel owned by Brixmore into a park with platforms for food trucks. The cost is estimated at approximately 240,000, and was presented to Brixmore, who may be open to redeveloping the parcel in the future. Devin continued by explaining the application is due on November 24th, and that we are likely to hear back from the committee in January or February, with an estimated start date in April or May. The mayor and the committee members supported pulling the city match from multiple sources, including Zomias, the Mayor's Contingency Fund, the RRA, and the DRP. Sharon Davis made a motion to fund the $75,000 municipal match on the VTAP grant, and to provide a signed municipal resolution for the grant application. The motion passed unanimously. So move.
Second.
Our motion has been seconded. Is there any discussion, debate, questions?
So, by my calculations, we'd have 7,500 roughly in Zomias, based on the 271 figure you gave me.
Yeah.
A couple.
Yeah. So, 7,000 maybe, I mean, I'm not, I'm not, I knew that it was going to be tight.
A small amount, yeah.
That's a conversation, so, a small amount, how's that?
Sure.
Whatever's left in there.
And Brennan had indicated that the RRA has about 7,900. Is that figure right? 79?
We have, we have a capital project lined up, 7,900. I have not had any discussion with the RRA to worry about.
Great. Sure. And I had a discussion. And I had a discussion with Nikki from the DRP about them coming up with five thousand. She has not taken it to her board yet, but she was enthusiastic about the project, so that's some of the money.
Right. And there was discussion about contingency, and then whether or not we have a match, whether we can use in-kind services for any of that.
But the impression I got was that if we can come up with seventy-five, we're going to get three hundred thousand dollars to address something that desperately needs to be addressed.
Take the bottles back.
Very good. Alderman Gillum?
The motion is?
The motion was?
Was.
To approve that. We don't have, we don't have to earmark where that seventy-five thousand is coming from right now. We just have to show the commitment from the city.
That's my confusion, if we're actually putting the money up or we're just committing.
We're committing the money, showing, showing support.
You know, important clarification. This motion is to show the support for seventy-five thousand dollars and outline potential tools to pull from.
That's correct.
Attorney Blumer?
Just a quick technical question. So, what's the distinction between committing the seventy-five thousand and, I guess, approving the seventy-five thousand? I mean, if you apply and then you say, actually, we couldn't get the seventy-five, is that, or has it got to come from somewhere at that point?
Right. So, if we approve, we have to, it has to come from somewhere.
Okay.
Right. We don't know where it's coming from yet. Well, we know some. We don't know all, I guess, for your sake. Your budget? No, kidding.
So, we, just to clarify here, we are committing seventy-five thousand for the sake of doing the paperwork to get the grant in.
Correct.
We do not spend it unless we do have the grant in hand. Thank you.
Yeah, and Devin laid out that it would be potentially three years to do.
Right, right, right. I just want to make sure people are home and we're not throwing money in the air here, but we're actually not spending it until we actually get the grant.
So, I have this question. Alderman Neary able to determine if that maybe this could be done in kind?
I haven't heard from him about that, so I, the weekend is kind of between that meeting and now, so he has one day, but I'll follow up with him.
All right. Sue, you have?
Well, I mean, I just, I'll be honest, it's kind of hard for me to commit money that I don't know exists. Like, I think, this is why it would have been nice to have the Zomias fund available, but, you know, I mean, alas, we are here. Are there any other possible streams that the mayor?
So, I think it would be safe to say that your choices are fairly limited, and the contingency would be, I think, a logical choice. And if this comes in, then I would have no objections on that.
Okay.
There's a healthy balance in there.
Good. Thank you.
And for a quick check on the numbers, it sounds like contingency, if I aside, we have approximately twenty thousand dollars. There's still this outstanding question of if we could get up to thirty-five thousand dollars in the paving bond.
Correct.
So, it could be as.
So, we're talking maybe forty-five thousand that we're looking for.
Very. Yes, thank you. Any other questions, discussion, debate? If not, we have a motion that's been seconded. Would all those in favor please say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. All right. This brings us to committee of the whole. This happened on October 28th, 2021. This was the Consolidated Communications. Members present were Alderman Russo, Savage, Dungus, Talbot, Gillum, DePoy, Davis, and Franco. Others present were Attorney Blumer from Consolidated Communication, Jeff, Mary, Andy, Amanda O'Callaghan, Gordon from the Herald, and Bill Moore. And Amanda has the regional planning question, and Bill Moore is the head of the local CUD. The meeting is called over at 5:30 PM. Jeff Austin, Mary Ellen, Andy Rice provide their position of their position with Consolidated Communication and the work that the company intends to do throughout the city and region. Alderman Russo describes the reason why he did the mission as well, and details his concerns. Jeff Austin speaks to how they view the work with private property owners. Jeff emphasizes the company's commitment to customer satisfaction. Jeff speaks to traffic safety and the concerns that have been raised regarding subcontract companies. Mary Ellen describes steps are taken to ensure that customers have an avenue to reach out to the company if they have a concern to raise. Mary Ellen shares with the Board that Consolidated Communications wants to be receptive to all community concerns. Alderman Davis shares her concern regarding traffic control in the areas surrounding the hospital and Grove Street and the attentiveness of individuals managing the flow of traffic. Alderman Dungus shares an incident he witnessed in his specific safety concerns. Alderman Russo states to the Board that he struggled to find contact information for Consolidated Communication when he had an issue and that he wished, that he wished to bring forward. He speaks to permits and ways in which the city could consider doing things differently going forward, allowing for greater awareness of projects occurring within the city. Andy Rice discusses a pre-construction meeting that occurred in July with department heads and officials. Alderman Gillum stresses that despite the unfortunate mishaps, this overall is a project that is going to bring significant benefit to the city. Mary Ellen speaks to Alderman Gillum's point and describes ways in which the city will benefit from fiber optic cable build. Jeff speaks to specifics of what is used in the build-out and its benefit. Andy Rice speaks to the Rutland being very early in the build-out process. Mary Ellen speaks to the work that is currently underway with existing CUDs. Alderman DePoy shares historical perspective on fiber optic cable in Rutland. Alderman DePoy cites that he wants to see the problems raised by residents addressed, as well as what has been brought forward by Commissioner Rotundo. Alderman DePoy asks if communication, including plans regarding scope of work, be communicated regularly. Alderman Dungus speaks to utility blight, specifically sitting copper wiring that remains taped to poles and buildings. Jeff speaks to the way in which they can address this and where it exists in Rutland. Andy Rice asks if people reach out to him when they are identifying an issue and that he will respond as quickly as possible. Andy discusses the process behind addressing dual poles and their removal. He notes that Consolidated Communications is the last entity to transfer from poles, having to wait until all others have removed their connection. Andy describes that there's currently an active, active plan and contractor working to address dual poles throughout the city. Alderman Franco asks for a proactive communication going forward from Consolidated Communication. Mary Ellen shares that moving forward, it will work to proactively establish communication cadence with municipalities. Bill Moore speaks to CUD's relationship with Consolidated Communication, setting it as been a positive, and that they are looking forward to having fiber optic cable. Attorney Blumer speaks to establishing a standing meeting to address communication challenges. The meeting adjourns at 6:42 PM, and this is for information only. Alderman Russo.
Just a quick addition, that Mary Ellen from the Consolidated, her last name is Player, P-L-A-Y-E-R.
Very good. Mary Ellen Player.
Like in the group, Player.
I appreciate that. I couldn't remember the last name.
Maybe come back.
Any other questions, discussion, hearing? None. We're on reports of select committees, of which we have none. Reports of representatives, nothing. We've already done petitions, letters, miscellaneous communication. There's nothing for the Board of Control Commissioners. Is there any unfinished business to come before the Board? That brings us to miscellaneous motions, resolutions, and new business. Does anyone, Alderman Russo?
Yes. Help me out with this, folks. I called Alderman DePoy today and tried it on him. Back in the nineties, I borrowed my dad's antique pickup truck that hadn't seen a winter since 1961 and spent a week with the staff where I worked, getting it ready for the parade. The Saturday, the Sunday that the parade was supposed to happen, the weather report was that there was a hurricane coming up the east coast and high winds and rain, and they canceled it at four o'clock that day, beautiful sunshine, clear blue skies. It was a beautiful, starry night that night, and we didn't have the parade. So, I remember the late Alderman Brown was the chair. He said, we'll move the Board of Alderman's meeting to Tuesday. Let's have the parade on Monday, so Monday, November 1st. We set out with Dad's old truck and a bunch of staff from the radio station playing the Beverly Hillbillies, and I have pictures somewhere, or maybe it's in the station album, of them covered with snow, and his truck trying to get home with it with summer tires. I got some comments from people that really spent some money, put a lot of time into the parade, and I think that, I'd like to, if we could, maybe just a friendly recommendation to the Rec Department Recreation Committee is to have a backup plan, because canceling it really disappointed a lot of people. It ended their, their plan, their money they invested in it, whatever. It ended up, the weather wasn't that bad, some people said. That's certainly nothing compared to the 1990 snowstorm that we had that night, but I just would like to, you know, have a backup plan. What's wrong with the parade happening on November 1st or November 2nd? And saying, hold it, don't tear your floats apart, let's wait for a clear night, let's do this. And if it's a manpower problem, I said last year, Alderman Gillum got me involved with the veterans in VFW parade, and he and I could help. We're glad to give me a flashlight, I'll help out if they want any help. I'd love to help them, but it's too bad that it's gotten two years now without the parade, so I'd just like to make a motion that we work with Recreation and Parks, and if the Rec Committee come up with a discussion on how we could have a backup plan if this ever happens again. It doesn't happen often, so it's not a big deal, but there's some disappointed people we didn't have a parade.
I'll second that for debate.
Well, are you asking for a referral, or are you asking to debate that tonight?
No, no, I'm asking kind of maybe to, I think Ms. Peters and everybody ought to all sit down and.
So, you want a referral?
Yeah, yeah, referral, I guess. And I said, I'm not trying to beat anybody up. It is what it is. It's over. It's on, but I'm just thinking of a contingency plan so that the whole world will know, hey, if it doesn't happen, it will happen. Or do we always cancel it, you know?
So, are you seconding for a referral?
I second it for debate. If that, if I didn't hear you referring it to committee, correct?
Yes.
I'm seconding it.
You'll refer?
Yes.
It's non-debatable, right?
That's non-debatable.
Yeah.
So, we have a motion, it's been seconded, to refer to the Recreation Committee.
It's debatable.
It's debatable. That's fully debatable.
We don't want Mr. DePoy to debate it, but it is.
He'd love to.
I wasn't going to debate it.
I'll stop, we hate the real truth.
Nice try, Tom.
Alderman DePoy, I use my best.
So, I, as I told Alderman Russo earlier today, I did speak with Kim Peters, and, you know, it's a very difficult decision what she did. I mean, you know, it really boiled down to, a lot of the participants didn't want to, they were backing out.
They pulled out.
They pulled out, and so, you know, I asked a lot of the questions that others have asked. So, why can't we do it Monday? Well, you know, that pushes us into a weekday where DPW, the Police Department, the Fire Department are all really busy doing other things. So, I did suggest to her, as Alderman Russo has brought up, let's talk about this in the future, how we can have a wider window to hold this event, because it's like one of the biggest parades in probably the Northeast, at least in New England. I mean, it's bigger than anything in the state of Vermont. So, to have, he's right, to have it, not have it for the last two years is really taking away from this community. So, next year, Halloween's going to be on a Sunday, no, what is it? It's going to be a Monday, I guess, next year. So, we'll have Friday, Saturday, Sunday, leading into Monday, the 31st, to come up with something that is doable, and, you know, hopefully we can get that done. Now, on the positive side, they did have an event over at the Rec Center. They had over a thousand people that went through that. It was fantastic for the kids. The kids loved it that were there. There was music playing. There were, there were other things going on. The Fire Department was down there handing out candy. They handed out candy to probably nine hundred of the thousand kids that were through, and